Welcome, Woodbury, to your village board meeting of August 14th, 2025. Before we, I have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence with our deputy mayor of the evening. I just want to talk about, we lost a member of our family here in the village of Woodbury, in Jason Mathis. Last Thursday, Jason, it was not, of course, something we knew that was coming, but he died of a heart attack. This is not something that occurs at all in the history of the village. When we hire people here in the village of Woodbury, I don't get involved with that. I leave it to the department heads because I'm only here for two years guaranteed, and the rest of the time, they've got to live with that particular individual. Well, Jason was the model employee, was the sweetest man you can absolutely meet. Big man, okay? Should have been playing power forward for the New York Knicks. Six-seven, thin, but just the biggest heart you can absolutely imagine. Model employee, and he will be missed. He will be our moment of silence for tonight. So I thank you for listening. Lily Gerver. So, you want to pull that mic down? Can you pull that down? Jimmy, you can help with him. Though, I don't know. Jimmy broke it. All right. So Lily Gerver is our junior deputy mayor for this evening, and she is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So take it away, Lily Gerver. It's on. Go ahead. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As I always do, and the actual deputy mayor will join me in all of this, we have something special for Lily this evening. She looks so enthused. She just said she's always enthused. Enthusiast. Oh, look at you. So I'm going to give you a sash. You will eventually. Which arm does it go on? Either one. Which one would you like it on?
There we go.
There you go. There you go. And we've got a T-shirt for you, which will not fit for many years.
I like oversized T-shirts.
Okay.
Pajamas.
Yes, pajamas, and we have a certificate.
The certificate. Congratulations. I know you've been waiting for this. You keep wanting it. There you go.
All right, come here. Okay. Well, you could stay here, you could stay there, because we're not done. So tonight, the village of Woodbury says goodbye to a woman who's been protecting our best interests for the better part of a decade and a half. It is with great sadness that I, this is Kelly Norton's last meeting as our attorney. As a new trustee with Jesus Gomez, Kelly was so helpful in learning the ins and outs of the village of Woodbury. Our side of the table is not an easy side of the table, but Kelly was always there. And even as mayor, I must be the biggest pain in the tuchus for you, certainly the funniest mayor, all right? But I would like to present you with some stuff. So if you can come up here, and Lily is going to help us, okay? You made a noise. Made a noise. Since I'm your typical male, and I don't do any kind of shopping, first off, we have these flowers to present to you. And then, of course, is yet another certificate, which Kelly Norton, whose dedication and vision have been instrumental to our growth, the village of Woodbury would like to take this opportunity to thank you for everything you have given to our community, and would like to let you know our doors are always open to you, a person who has always felt like a member of our family. And there's a Chuck Norris quote on this, okay? "There is no finish line. When you reach one goal, find a new one." That's Chuck Norris for you. So thank you for everything. We wish you all the best in the county. We're going to be leaving Orange County because they're taking yet another one of our attorneys. So, anyway, thank you so much, Kelly. And I will sit down. Introductory local law seven of 2025 entitled Farm Wineries and Distilleries. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments amending chapter 310 zoning of the code of the village of Woodbury relative to farm wineries and farm distilleries. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on July 3rd, 2025. Anyone in the public? Well, that's all I have on that. So if anybody in the public wishes to speak on this, speak now or forever hold your peace. You get to go to the podium and be on camera. I can't sell that one. All right, going once, going twice, no comments, no comments. Okay, can I have motion in a second to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, can I have motion in a second to adopt local law six of 2025 entitled Farm Wineries and Distilleries, and to direct the village clerk to print a copy of the new law in the minutes?
Second.
Discussion. I believe it's a local law seven.
That is the introductory local law, so the adopted local law is different.
It's going to be six.
All right. Yeah, all right. So I got to go backwards one second, in reverse. Can I have motion in a second to declare a neg deck on local law, introductory local law seven of 2025?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Okay. Now going back, I have a motion in a second.
Discussion.
Discussion. There we go. Okay. Motion in a second to adopt local law six of 2025? Okay, discussion now, sir.
There was no opportunity for discussion at the July 11th meeting on the local law, but there were a number of issues that are raised by this local law that are going to impact, significantly impact, Woodbury's future. The intent of the law states that it's to add farm distilleries to the existing chapter 31029.1. This chapter allows farm wineries by special permits in residential districts. However, the replacement provision, that's what we're voting on tonight, does just the opposite. It actually removes this special permit from all properties except one. That's because it restricts all the properties to, just those that have frontage on Route 32. It also adds distilleries to the available farm operations, but for some reason, it excludes farm breweries. Both restrictions are in violation of the New York State Agricultural Marketing Law 305A. I had provided copies of that to the board, to the council members. It's important to note that the New York State law supersedes all local zoning in this type of situation. Since there were three approved agricultural districts in Woodbury, all three will be negatively affected. The content of the law raises many issues. This proposal requires agricultural impact statements for these types of changes prior to preceding the enactment. Additionally, the concern that I have is it proposes a limit on the area that's attributable to a deduction, which is 4,000 square feet, which is arbitrary and has no basis in the law. 4,000 square feet is a very small structure for carrying on a winery or brewery. Additionally, under New York State Agriculture and Marketing Law, the zoning cannot interfere with a facility required to produce 250,000 gallons annually under its New York State license. This is in contrast to the regular New York State winery license, which allows unlimited production. That's really the difference in the laws. Another inconsistency between the proposed law and the state license process is in subsection C. The requirement that's stated there is actually applicable to the certificate of occupancy, not the application. Section F of the proposed local law is barred by the AGM since the structure is a farm building in an ag district. Section G is not consistent with Agriculture and Marketing Law or the Alcohol Beverage Control Law. The maximum occupancy can only be ascribed to the area outside the accessory use, and then only for special permits. Section H is also not applicable to those uses in the agricultural district, since there's no area requirements that can be imposed on agricultural use. Similarly, the parking requirements can only be prescribed for the accessory use area, not for the agricultural use. This law really does need to be reconsidered and restructured to be consistent and to not, to essentially not spot zone this into one section along Route 32. That's why I'm opposed to it.
Trustee Freyband, I did receive your comments. I did review your comments. Again, this is not spot zoning. The purpose of this law is really just merging the two provisions in your code, farm wineries and farm distilleries. This was at the request of your building inspector. The documents that you provided to the board were not section 305A. You provided section 51-a, which is regarding a farm brewery license, and then the March of 2015 Anandaga County Planning Federation Annual Symposium handout. Those were the documents that you provided to the board, which are inapplicable here and outdated. The law that is before you is not contrary to the Ag and Markets Law and not contrary to section 305A. So I think we disagree there, and also it doesn't harm the properties that are in the village in agricultural districts.
If, when you say that doesn't harm them, if they're not allowed to have a use under this statute, which means none of the three agricultural districts are on Route 32.
Are any of those three currently proposing a farm winery or farm distillery?
There is one that I know of.
Well, I have not seen that application yet, nor have they presented anything to the village.
At this point, I'm trying to, trying to...
Trying to anticipate an application that may or may not come.
And anticipate an application that's going to come under the Agriculture and Markets Law and just become a contentious issue ending up in court.
Well, I disagree with your position.
Okay. At this time, I have a motion in a second.
I'd also like to offer comments before we vote.
Sure.
Sure. So Jim brings up some good points I agree on, maybe not all of them. I am confused, though, by the limitation. Normally, I'm not opposed to consolidating code, you know, helping local business, cutting a bit of red tape sometimes, but limiting it to having properties or farm wineries or distillers with direct access under Route 32 seems, I don't know, restrictive to me. I don't really understand why that's in the law. If you could explain, or...
That's what's in your code currently? So again, it was just merging the titles?
Thank you.
Okay. Village Clerk McLennan, roll call, please.
Trustee Freyband, have you voted?
No.
Trustee Farrow?
Nay.
Trustee Ferrelli? Yes. Trustee Ferrelli? Mayor Jayson?
Aye. Okay. Moving right along, public comment on agenda items only. Ladies and gentlemen, I know we have a very large agenda this evening, okay? This is your moment to speak on anything. Go right ahead, Neil. You're raising your hand. You've got this. There is, if you didn't grab an agenda, there is an agenda on the table there.
Neil Brown, Highland Mills. Well, your agenda, Highland, is to retain a new attorney to the village board. I don't know how you're going to win whether you're going to get him.
Speak, you got to speak up, because I'm even having a hard time hearing you.
I don't know if you think you can do any better than Kelly. This village was created, and along with it, in 2006, we had to have, we had to have a village attorney. We were lucky we got Rick Alden, and along came Kelly Woodrake. And she has been for this village since its inception. Kelly, I'm a mission. And good luck. And that brings me to the appointment of a new attorney tonight. This board appointed a new attorney a few weeks ago to the plan. It was all was three to two. The two no votes were simply based on how much extra that attorney might cost. The applicant, not the village, but of course residents, but the applicant. Those two trustees that voted no were more concerned about the applicant and the people who want to come to Woodbury and build in Woodbury than they are about the residents who live here, and have lived here for years, and the new people who come here who want to live here. So in tonight's decision, we have to figure that attorney is going to represent us in the annexation petitions before this board. And we are not interested, I don't think there's anybody in this room who'll be interested in how much that attorney is going to cost us, because the applicants don't care how much it's costing them. They will spend, they will spend two, three, four, five times more than what we will pay an attorney to represent us. So I hope this board unanimously approves this new attorney. I know that there's been research on it, and most likely, this attorney is one of the best we can get. So I hope that you consider this in your vote tonight, and that you unanimously don't figure about the, the...
Cost.
The people coming to Woodbury and the petitioners and stuff like that, that you consider Woodbury your own, our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Maria Hunter, on your agenda tonight, under new business, I believe it is? Anyway, it's for the Central Valley Idicronal Woodbury Public Library that was owned, on the county records by the Woodbury Public Library. My question to you, I see that you have an intermunicipal agreement on the website, which I printed, and I see it's very more informed than what I saw over two weeks ago that the library board trustees had on their website. So I want to thank whoever was involved in putting a little bit more information into this IMA. But I have a silly question, and I know I spoke with the treasurer earlier today. Once they sign this IMA, as long as they show insurance coverage and they identify the village of Woodbury, I'm going to ask next week at the town board meeting, who's paying for the insurance? Because currently, that building is covered under the town insurance policy. But it's the Woodbury Public Library trustees that are asking for this intermunicipal agreement, not the town. So to me, that's a little conflict of issues going on there. So that concerns me greatly, because I'm always after that particular branch of not being town-owned property nor village-owned property, owned entirely by the board trustees. So that was one of my concerns on tonight with the agenda that you're going to be speaking about.
All right. Thank you, Maria. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on agenda items only? Going once? Going twice? All right, moving on to administrative business. Can I have motion in a second to accept proceed to the minutes of the meeting held on July 10th, 2025?
So moved.
Trustee Freyband, seconded by trustee Ferrelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Village Clerk McLennan, will you please read the first of two abstracts, abstract four?
Abstract four, page 252, 6 year, 218, 252, 6 year, 296, and totals $98,414.57.
All right. Can I have motion in a second to approve abstract four as read?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Village Clerk McLennan, you're up again. Abstract five.
252, 60, 297, through 252, 60, 455, and totals $1,273,834.77.
And there's a reason why I have her read these. My math skills. I know, I know. Anyway, can I have motion in a second to approve abstract five as read?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have three fire department equipment requests. So can I have motion in a second to approve Fire Department Equipment Request Two of 2025 for the purchase of fire prevention materials totaling approximately $1,939.50, which includes fire safety bottle kits, black firefighter hats, and firefighter stickers? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, can I have motion in a second to approve Fire Department Equipment Request Three of 2025 for the purchase of two jet fans, SCBA tracker and changing system for ladder truck 523 totaling approximately $11,960.00. This equipment request replaces 11 of 2025, which was previously approved in fiscal year 2024, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lastly, can I have motion in a second to approve Fire Department Equipment Request Four of 2025 for the calibration of all QRAE for gas meters totaling approximately $280?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gives me great pleasure to ask for a motion in a second to accept the membership application of John Finnegan to the Highland Mills Fire Company pending physical.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I have one more. Can I have motion in a second to accept the membership application of Damian Montanez to the Highland Mills Fire Company pending a physical?
Motion.
Trustee Farrow with the motion, trustee Ferrelli with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have two appointments, and this will be a big night to authorize me to do stuff. You know what comes with that, right? The looks that she gives me. Can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an agreement with Amy Levine, Esquire of Liberty Street Legal, to appoint as the zoning board of appeals attorney?
Discussion.
Yes.
Typically, the ZBA is authorized to find their own attorney. I'm questioning whether we got a written confirmation from them that this is their selected choice, and whether we've reviewed this attorney and whether he has any pending litigation affecting any of our communities.
I'm not sure if he or she, I should say, has got any pending litigation, but zoning board chairman Greg Brady and I met with her. It was his call. He was very pleased with her. Kelly was well aware of her reputation, and we move forward accordingly.
Yeah, did the board, that's what I'm asking you, did the zoning board actually vote on this hire?
The ZBA member just hasn't informed after you heard status, and I have to give the chairman.
I ask you if the board...
I'm a member of the ZBA board.
Yes, do you have a vote?
Okay. Okay. Anyway, the zoning board chair has approved her appointment. We went over that. I am more than happy with his decision on that. So do I have motion in a second?
I'd also like to offer discussion, if that's all right.
Okay.
Now, normally, I wouldn't be opposed to appointing lawyers, as Neil said.
You were at the last meeting.
Well, that's because I'm somewhat concerned with the way you're picking these folks.
So go ahead.
So for those of you who aren't aware, Amy Levine serves as B.J. Mendelson's personal attorney. She's served us with numerous formal requests, and I would argue has a possible conflict of interest with this board if she's to serve part of the village, considering she represents what is, I would almost say, a campaign surrogate of the mayor and his allies. I wouldn't say it's someone who's impartial, nor does she work with someone who's impartial, and for that reason, I will be definitely opposing this attorney. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to have a all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, appointment of village board attorney and authorizing me to sign this again. As you may know, this is Kelly Norton's official last meeting as our village attorney. So can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an agreement with, I'm not even going to try, Bleakley Platt and Schmidt LLP firm to serve as village board of trustees attorney? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I guess the question is, are we going to interview anybody, or is this simply delivered to us as a fait accompli? I would like to know the actual attorney that will be assigned, as we know the value of having the same person here for all of the activities.
Attorney that will be here will be Lino Scheretti.
And is he going to meet with us before you sign the agreement for the board to talk to this new hire?
I wasn't planning on that. Why would you want to meet with the attorney?
The attorney is a particularly important part of the operation and administration of this village, and it's important to me that we get the person that is familiar with the statutes that we're dealing with, and that he is going to be regularly the attorney in this firm that will be at the meetings and doing the grunt work.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to offer comments as well. I believe the firm as a whole is qualified and has experience, but I'd like to offer some comments. The proposal last time, as was stated and clarified in that meeting, was not just due to the concern for cost for applicants, but for the village as a whole and all the residents. We'll have to pay additional travel fees due to this firm being based in White Plains. Additionally, this was unmentioned last meeting, but I'm going to decide to mention it now. I have concerns with the way these attorneys and firms were found. I don't know if it's part of more of a good old boys' network, but there's a member of this firm that used to be the, is the owner of the former chairman of the Orange County GOP, the former chairman, who... who had some resignation problems and issues of his own. You can easily Google that. I just question the way these firms were found and wonder if we maybe branched out. I'm sure there's firms closer in the county we've looked at besides White Plains. Thank you.
Just so the board knows, I did give a listing to the mayor of several firms that I recommended, so that's how this firm was found.
Oh, we never saw that.
I gave the listing to the mayor of several firms.
And he didn't share that.
That's who I gave it to, so.
I'd also like to add, mostly in response to Neil Kraus's comments, the fees that are paid are being, are fees being paid by residents of Woodbury. Remember that residents constitute the majority of the people before the board, because the board has architectural review issues, it has additions to homes. It's not just a problem of businesses. It's really a problem that we need to look at the costs that we're imposing upon the residents, whether they be people who live here or people who do business here. And that's, I do consider that an appropriate consideration for declining to appoint an attorney that is going to have additional expenses because of travel, travel times, and additional expenses for the applicants who may indeed have to go and talk to the attorney to resolve issues. So I am opposed to this kind of approval of this very important part. This is hundreds of thousands of dollar investment in legal services. It needs to be done right the first time, whether it's paid forth by the village taxes or by the residents who live here.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor? Aye?
No.
Okay. Superb Developers, can I have a motion in a second to approve the refund of three permit fees in the amount of $13,650 to Superb Developers? To Superb Developers. Superb Developers requested a refund of permit fees for three applications that were submitted in December of 2024. Permits cannot be issued since they have not completed phase one of the project at this time. So can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Uh, motion trustee Freyband, seconded by trustee Suriello, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so as you know, we have a brand-new fire truck to service our community. So it's out with the old, in with the new. Fire chief Chris Burke was able to obtain appraisal on a buyer, and now I'll read the resolution. Whereas the village owns personal property, a 2001 Spartan Smeele 75-foot aerial truck that is surplus and no longer needed for use by the village. And whereas the board of trustees desires to declare said village-owned property surplus and to sell said surplus property through private negotiation. Now therefore be it resolved that the village-owned property, a 2001 Spartan Smeele 75-foot aerial truck located at the fire department, is hereby declared to be surplus and no longer necessary to the operation of the village. And be it further resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Woodbury hereby authorizes the mayor to sell the surplus property through private negotiation to the Fort Montgomery Fire District for $100,000 as the price of said property established through appraisal and negotiations. And be it further resolved that the purchaser of said property is purchasing property as is and shall be responsible for collecting and transporting said property off of village property. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as read, declaring equipment surplus and authorizing its sale?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by trustee deputy mayor Ferrelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I know boards do budget modifications at every meeting. We don't do that. We do it twice a year historically. That's the way we've always done it. So to wrap up the 2025, 2026 fiscal, 24, 2025 fiscal year, village treasurer is asking for the following modifications to be approved. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the following budget modifications as presented to close out fiscal year 2024, 2025, as presented by the village treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ferrelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I have just one question about this? Well, I understand that these are just inter-fund transfers to balance things out. When we're doing the abstracts or when we're signing vouchers, is there some way that we can see that that voucher is the thing that's basically exceeding that budget line, so we have a chance to really consider what's happening there? I noticed that like the fire department in this case is one of the agencies that went over budget, and when we approved the vouchers, we didn't know that was happening.
There is no way to do that because the vouchers don't get entered into the accounting system until you all sign them. So I can't even process them for payments without you all signing, having two signatures on them to do so. But each department, so we break it down, and I've said this many times in the past, we break it down 4.01, 4.401, 4.402, 4.403, 4.404. Comptroller doesn't care. You can go out 12 digits if you want. All comptroller cares about is .4. So as long as everything in .4 stays in the black, that's all they care about. And we do that. We do stay in the black within the .4.
That's what this is about.
Right, so when I get a voucher, it's reviewed to make sure, one, we haven't paid it yet, and two, that they're staying within their .4 budget. I can't, and then every month you get a report from me that shows you where each line item is. To do that for each voucher that comes in, every single voucher, before you've even signed it, before I've even processed it, that would be a complete waste of time. It would be a lot of effort for very little outcome.
Thank you.
However, if the board, if we, of department is ever getting close to that red mark, then I sit down with the department head and we discuss why their spending is exceeding what it should be. But in the 18 years that the village has existed, as I told the mayor this morning when he asked me a similar question, only once have we ever had to use fund balance to accommodate an over expenditure. Every department has stayed within their budget for the whole time.
This is an awful lot of juggling to stay within that.
Which is why we only do it twice a year. If we, we could do modifications every single month, like, or every single meeting like other municipality, another municipality does, but it's just extra paperwork to do so. Whereas if we do, we only do it at budget time, and we do it after the closeout of the fiscal year.
And I appreciate your help going through this too, to understand.
Sure.
Your double entry bookkeeping here.
Yep, you're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At our last meeting, we tabled this to allow the town board to discuss internally. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a proposal received from Nelson Pope Voorhees at the request of our adjourned annexation attorney, Brian Cave Leighton Peisner LLP, who is handling the annexation matter as it pertains to the Ace Farm parcels?
Motion?
All in favor?
Just a question, did you get an answer from the town board? Are they, are we clear on the IMA?
No, they wanted us to approve it first, and then they would approve it at their next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See the bids, notice two bidders was printed in the Times-Sheriff Record on July 10, 2025, with the bid date being July 24, 2025. One bid was received in the amount of $263,804.00 and zero cents from Tam Enterprises. I will note the initial cost estimates were for $192,000. This is higher, but the funds are available through the bond. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the bid from Tam Enterprises as received? Seconded, all in favor?
Just a question, where did we advertise this? Is this in the blue book, or is it just local newspapers, or?
I think Times-Sheriff Record.
Times-Sheriff Record, which is our official newspaper for the village of Woodbury.
In the future, if we could put it in a blue book, it's a much wider distribution, and that's where the contractors are looking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. My apologies to the board. The auction results came in last night. So I don't, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to review it because we need to approve it. So can I have a motion in a second to accept and approve the auction results provided by Absolute Auctions for surplus equipment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an intermunicipal agreement for the control of snow and ice on certain county roads for the 2025, 2026 season? This is something we do every year.
So moved.
Seconded by trustee deputy mayor Ferrelli, all in favor?
Aye.
We are going to table, Sue, what are we going to do with the vault, the charging? Table, okay. So next up on your agenda was the EV charging station. We are going to table that to our September 25 meeting. Okay.
Can we have discussion on that?
At the December, September 25 meeting, we can discuss it, so.
Okay.
All right, LightPath agreement. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an agreement with LightPath for high-speed internet for village hall and water department at a reduced negotiated price? It was 850, and thanks to village treasurer Podvin, she was able to slice it down to 765 per location. Plus we added the water department. Hallelujah. I would like to thank Desiree for all her hard work, not just for this, but for everything. Okay, as she talks over me, don't worry about that. Yeah, blame John. I'm sorry, John. Okay. No, I'm going to get a motion in a second, but anyway. I actually made a mistake. We should be thanking Rob Wyant for this price cut. So let's thank Rob Wyant for that as well. I know. All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve this?
So moved.
Trustee Freyband with the motion, trustee Suriello with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
And kudos to Desiree for another. Nice job. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the CDPHP dental, Delta Dental Plan L renewal for 2012, 2025 to 1130, 2026, with no change in premium costs?
Motion, second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, IMA with the Woodbury Library Board. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an intermunicipal agreement with the Woodbury Public Library for the Highway Department to repair concrete pavers at the front entrance of the Central Valley Library?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
My question is. Back in 2022, the library received a $25,000 grant for, I'm sorry. For improvements to the building, including walkway stairs and ADA compliant ramp. Was this money intended for that?
I have no clue. What, so here's how this transpired with the, with the Woodbury Public Library. They reached out to Joey Jean, not Joey Jean Zero, I'm guessing, who then reached out to Rob Wyant, who then reached out to me about repairing some pavers at the front entrance. Rob didn't respond quick enough. They started looking for the contractors. And that was a, a complete waste of time because nobody was getting back to them. They came back to me and asked me about this, and I said, fine, but because there was a slip and fall at this area, I said we should get a hold harmless for this, and that's how we're here with this.
Okay, and who's paying for the materials and who's paying for the labor for this? Because the library is a private entity. They're autonomous. They have their own budget. So I'm just like, the labor and the cost of materials, if it's coming out of the village, taxpayer money, I just, I feel like that's a fine line there. So I just have some questions.
If I could comment, I do believe that this is, I commend the mayor for actually taking on this issue. The library is an asset, a treasure for the people of Woodbury. It serves the people of Woodbury. That sidewalk is partially part of the school system sidewalk as well. This is something that can be done much more inexpensively. It's not a large project. These are basically stone pavers that just need to be pulled up and then cemented over. And I think this is something that, because it serves the people of Woodbury, we should support it. Yes.
But I think the village should be made whole from their costs. That's my, that's my issue.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a private entity. It's not owned by the village, not owned by the town. They have their own budgets. Now, if they want to hire the village to be their contractor, and then they're going to pay us back every penny, then that would be fine. I mean, I know it's good for Woodbury. I know it's a children's library, but the same token, it's not a village piece of property. So those are my questions. How is the village going to be paid back for the labor that we're going to be doing for this, and any materials that we may or may not be buying?
So I'm not sure who is responsible for paying for it, but if the Woodbury Library is a private entity, the village would have to be made whole because donating the cost of that would be considered unconstitutional.
Considered what?
An unconstitutional use of funds.
So let me ask you this. When I, when the Highway Department has been doing a lot of work for the town of Woodbury, that we don't have to be reimbursed for?
Generally, that's usually.
Because it's a municipality.
Municipality.
And just to clarify.
I'm unpause. Materials are not being paid by the village. It was just the labor of the Highway Department personnel that were doing the work. And I don't know how much work is involved because all I was asked to do was reach out to the insurance company about the hold harmless. I provided the library with a version. They came back with an amended version. We came back, went back to them with a amended, amended version just to make sure it was very clear that this is just for this project, and we are not responsible for maintaining the work after it's completed. But because of the possible slip and fall that may have occurred, we don't have confirmation for that, we wanted to make sure we were protected so that we wouldn't get dragged into that lawsuit. If there is one, allegedly.
Allegedly.
Yeah, I don't have any confirmation if there is or not. So yeah, so supplies would not be, just manpower.
In terms of the labor, my conversation with Highway Superintendent Rob Wyant, I think, was two men for a half a day would be what it would work out to be, so eight-hour day? Okay, total? No. No, because I didn't expect us to be looking for the library to reimburse us for this.
You're looking at like ballpark without having exact numbers, and you know how I hate giving out information without having exact information?
I do.
About $600 in labor.
It's not, it's not the money. It's setting the precedent, and that's, that was my concern about it. And again, it is a private entity. So again, when we do work for the town, the municipality, and that's, but that's just my opinion.
You can approve the IMA subject to a modification, including reimbursement for that. And it may be, it may be less than that, and it may be within their budget, but that way you don't have to wait, and the mayor could still work it out with the library. If you would like to do that, you could approve it subject to that modification.
I would move, move it as an amendment that it be subject to the reimbursement of actual experienced costs.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I have a motion in a second? Because I'm just, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee deputy mayor Ferrelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So back with the previous board, we signed an agreement with Evaku. The idea was that it was a monitoring system for adding the proper amount of something, a chemical we never mentioned in the village of Woodbury, thank you Mike Queenen and Desiree Podvin, to reduce the sulfate levels, thereby better controlling our costs associated with the odor control. So the ownership has changed at Evaku, thereby requiring. So the ownership has changed at Avakwa, thereby requiring a new contract. So can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, you got to get a good one in because it's her last meeting, guys, to sign the Avakwa 2025 contract?
So moved, with a question.
Go ahead.
Where, where is the Route 17 manhole that's involved?
Jason. It's on Route 17 in the shoulder, just probably about a quarter mile up from the entrance on the highway, on 17 West.
Quarter mile from where?
On 17 West.
Yes.
It's about a quarter of a mile up on the pull-off. From the on-ramp.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approving a temporary closure of road block party, Shewett Place. Bye. Got a motion in a second to allow Shewett Place in Central Valley a temporary road closure for August 16th, 2025 for their annual block party. Both Highway Superintendent and Woodbury PD have made aware of the possible road closure.
Motion.
So moved, second.
Seconded by trustee Fryman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, waive public assembly permit fee. Can I have a motion in a second to waive the public assembly permit fee for the Climate Smart Task Force Community Yard Sale scheduled for October 18th, 2025 from 10 to 2?
So moved, okay, second.
All right, I'll give it to the two at the end, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so I need to acknowledge receipt of the petition received August 14th, 2025. All right, so congratulations, Woodbury, we got a second annexation petition. Give yourselves a round of applause for that one. There you go. Okay, so first off, I need to acknowledge receipt of the petition received August 14th, 2025 from KJ Town of Palm Tree. Just, yeah, Seven Springs, Seven Springs Estates LLC, so forth. So can I motion in a second to declare the village of Woodbury lead agency in the annexation petition received on July 17th, 2025?
So just recently, the board actually received a declaration of lead agency from Curious Joel in the Town of Palm Tree, so what the village would be doing would be objecting to their declaration of lead agency and declaring yourselves to serve as lead agency.
Okay, so can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
All right, motion by Deputy Mayor Forelli, seconded by trustee Fabro.
Discussion.
Yes.
I spoke to you briefly about this. This is not the same situation as the 120-plus acre application currently being processed. I believe this is premature on two reasons. The application information is deficient in that the application is made on behalf of a number of property owners, I think there's six property owners involved in this, and they're all represented by someone referring to themselves as an agent. As with any application to the town, that agent needs to produce a signed affidavit that they are the appointed agent with a notarized signature of the property owner of record in order for that to be a completed application. Secondly, this is different because based on the EAF that was provided, this is going to be an unlisted action, and that it would be in our interest at this point not to do a coordinated review, but to simply take the matter individually as is provided in the law, because this would obviate the need for getting the DEC to spend their time trying to decide.
trustee Fryman, you've already received a request from the village of Curious Joel and the Town of Palm Tree to coordinate review, so right now you have to respond to that.
And our response should be that we intend to do a uncoordinated review as provided for type-two actions.
It's not a type-two action.
Or unlisted action.
My advice would be, as I said before, you would object to this. I do say it's different than the Ace Farms area annexation, it's in a different location, but would be to object to their declaration to serve as lead agency and declare yourself as lead agency. It would go to the DEC, but I don't think you need special counsel, I think your new counsel of Bleakley Platt would be sufficient to be able to handle that.
And, and why would you oppose doing this as a?
An uncoordinated review?
Uncoordinated review, where we would have control over the entire process.
Because they've already declared that they want to coordinate.
That doesn't affect whether it's a coordinated or uncoordinated action, we don't have to agree to that.
Right. I've given you my advice, if you don't want to take it, you don't have to.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's start with. I got a.
You got a motion in a second.
I got a motion in a second, this declares lead agency, but don't have to.
You object to lead agency.
Okay, of KJ Palm Tree, correct?
You've done it all in one motion.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion in a second?
Do I have a motion in a second?
Yes. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
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 May.
Okay, or for dedication, we're getting there, I promise you, we're getting there. Planning Board required that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant offered to dedicate the main, the water main, and a proposed four-inch force main to the village of Woodbury. By the way, this is the Aon Hotel. In consultation with the village engineer and the water superintendent, they suggested the village decline accepting these. So I asked the board, what is your pleasure?
Do we have a discussion on this?
That would be, that would be right.
I would, I would like to get a, because we've already lost two lawsuits on this property, I'd like to get a written statement from both department heads as to the reason that this is not satisfactory to the village.
It was, I can, what I can tell you is that it was a requirement of the planning board's resolution, and it's a typical requirement of the planning board's resolution. The planning board, the applicant then said in order to comply with this condition, we have to offer it. So then that offer was submitted, it was given to Natalie and to your water superintendent, they met, and they said, we do not want to accept this on behalf of the village. But in order to satisfy that condition so the plans can be signed, the offer has to be given to this board. So I provided it to the board, and I said that your department head and your village engineer suggested and recommended with their expertise that it be declined by this board.
And I'm suggesting it needs to be in writing, because this will be a lawsuit.
All right, did I get a motion in a second?
Yeah, yeah.
I did not. It's on. God, we need for an hour. Yeah, go ahead. Speak loudly.
Hello, is that working? All right. It's due to the location, the depth of the mains, and getting to them is not practical. The sewer main is at 1.20 feet deep, and doing a stream crossing, that is not something that the village water and sewer department would want to take on. And same thing for the water main, the location and the property being developed and having to be returned to that state is a lot for the department to have to do, as well as access it.
Can we, can we get something like that in writing, so we have that to, to basically deny this because essentially it stops the development?
If the mayor would like me to do that, that's up to him, I would.
We're stopping the development with this, so unless there's a way to remedy this.
Stop.
No, no, if, they submitted, and as I understand it, their plans were approved.
Their plans are approved, they're going, all they need to do is satisfy the condition, they need to get a CO, and they, they don't need the village to accept this to continue, they just needed to submit this and have the board take an action. They're going to get their CO.
Whether, that we, accepted or not.
All they needed to do was submit an offer to you.
Comply with the requirement.
Comply with their requirement. That's it.
And it will, this, this.
By putting it on your agenda tonight and you voting to decline it, we get to fill in a little circle with a check mark, and John can mark it off the list, and that's it.
So they're responsible for the maintenance of those sections of the line?
Correct.
And they're aware of that, and they are aware that you are declining it tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to decline the dedication of the water main and the proposed four-inch force main from Aon?
So moved.
Uh, motion by deputy mayor, seconded by trustee Fryman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I have an additional item, I do not like additional items, but it's for the same applicant, George Lithgow is asking us to, so we can move this forward. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the bond estimate provided by Aon in double the amount provided by Aon totaling $86,800, subject to the village engineer's review?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Newman application, you're up. Okay, the village received a request from Malka and, and don't kill me, actually, I'm not even going to do the first name.
It's okay.
And Isaac Newman, on June 19th, 2025, requesting that the village allow for two adjoining properties at 1113 and 1115 Route 32 to be combined into a 21-acre parcel to allow for an event venue. This request would require a zone change to the area. All right, so this is in front of the village board for the board to decide, determine if we want to move this forward. So this is kind of a work session that you have no comments on, and the board gets to ask the applicant about this, and then we could decide whether we're going to put it on the next agenda to vote and approve it, or kick it to the curb. So, here you are.
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what you're looking to do, let's start with that.
Yeah, so we have these two properties, they're adjacent to each other, they're located on Route 32, they're very close to the Paella Winery that I think is now, I actually think the event.
Sweet Clover Farms.
Sweet Clover Farms, I believe they just opened this week.
Yeah, this past weekend, yep.
This past weekend, yeah, I saw they had a nice venue over there, and we believe that this is an asset to add to, to Woodbury Village, just to accommodate some of the, I, I think that this, this kind of venue is very well needed, and it's the type of venue that would bring, you know, business to, to the village, and I think that it's, it's located strategically on a block that has other venues for lights, so it's in, it's conforming with the, the area. I think we also think that this is just a great location just because of its surroundings, there is definitely noise coming off the 87, so it's really not something that's going to disturb as far as noise goes, as far as traffic goes coming off of 32, we already have the traffic from the other venues that are doing a similar type of thing. I think keeping it in that area as well is, is keeping these type of venues kind of located in an area of the village that is already happening and has been happening successfully for years, so I think that's, that just adds. I think both properties being there really do accommodate one another, and, and of course bring that type of business to the village, and allowing for, for, for this venue to hire all the, you know, locals that are doing this, you know, type of work for the venue itself, where, where it be like, you know, anything from flower to, 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 you know, anything has to do with like wedding preparations, lighting, DJs, you know, anything that has to do with the events is something that we would try to consider, of course, hiring directors of the village and creating more job opportunities for these type of, type of event spaces, and type of events would be something that we would look to do. Also, I just want to say that my wife here, Amala, is, she's very talented at, she has a background in event planning, she's actually first a florist in events, so she does have already experience, and I think that this project, doing, doing a project for her would be, would suit her, and I think that she's ready to do this project, and I think that it's something that we would love to bring to the village and, and see if we can continue to grow it in the village and continue to work with several residents of the village who would want to work at a venue like this, and then of course, bringing all types of events from, you know, weddings to ceremonies from outside, you know, even from New York City, we believe that there are people from New York City, from Northern Jersey, from upstate, from anywhere in the areas to Woodbury, that it's, it's going to bring, you know, hospitality and these type of people into the, to the village, and of course, bringing these type of people to the village, they, they come in, they realize what the village has to offer, and then, of course, they, they would return because we, we, we saw ourselves when we came here first, of just the incredible, incredible surroundings you guys have here, it's really beautiful. I think this, this property is like, has a background, has a, of that, of beauty of the village, so we believe that it's hoping to be a good location, and it's a venue that's going to work in that area. So we just ask if we can see what, what, see what your comments are regarding our proposal here, and see if we can proceed with this.
Okay, just so the public knows, you have Sweet Clover Farms there, then you have a cul-de-sac, I think it's three or four homes, I actually think it's three.
Three homes.
And then there's this open space next to it, which is where this is proposed.
I forgot to mention also the nurseries then opposite.
Yes, opposite.
There's another commercial.
Commercial development there. So anyway, going to the board for questions to the applicant, starting at the far end, trustee Fryman.
Just to be clear, you're asking for a zoning change to just these two lots?
Correct.
I see. Typically, that's not the way zoning works, so.
We spoke about it. Do you have any que, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, trustee Fabro?
So I see the application, you're looking to have up to 180 guests, it says, and possibly accommodate or potentially build a parking area for 60 vehicles and a stage in the backyard of one of the houses?
Yeah, so there would be like a.
Is it not working? Sorry. Sure. Sure, sure, sure. Sorry, wasn't speaking to them like enough. So I was just saying, clarifying rather, with the applicant, that they plan to have 180 guests and then 60 vehicles with a, it says a parking lot, and then I think a tent structures or a stage perhaps in the, one of the backyards of the buildings?
Yeah, that's the concept right now. We, we want to keep the integrity of the land, so we're just, the stage is kind of going to be just like a, a platform that allows for, you know, seating to happen, so you know, sometimes the, the conditions of the grass, the grass is wet, or you know, different seasons allow for different things, so basically this allows for the concentration of that area, which I think is strategically tough back there to not disturb anyone, but also be set back there and kind of not disturb the land, but still allow for the ceremony or the event to happen in that area. And as, as far as the sizing wise, we believe that, you know, we don't want to go too big, we've seen that, you know, typically in these kind of event venues, they're somewhere in the 60 to 80 people range, but you know, to, to accommodate up to is what we're requiring, because I think that if there is a larger party, we'd like to try to host them. And we feel that the space is large enough to do so, and I think this, that area is a good area for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, trustee Suriello.
Okay. So you're going to use the two existing homes?
Yes.
So are you going to be merging the lots?
Uh, that, that would be a plan, yeah.
Okay.
If, if allowed.
Okay, well, okay, so you're going to be using the two homes as separate entities? So how is that working, like?
No, so it would be like a campus.
Okay.
Of the two lots separate like they are now, it would just be a campus that have the two pre-existing homes on the lot.
Okay, but if you have an event with 150 people, they're going to be dispersed into two homes?
No, so, no, it's a day, it's a nightly event, so it would be like a wedding, like show up, and then whatever is three-hour, four-hour event, and then you leave. It's not, the, the homes are not necessarily, could be or could be included, no, we're not housing 180 people in the.
I'm not saying housing, but I'm saying the event, if you have 150 people coming to an event, and it's 20 degrees outside, right?
Oh.
You're not going to be out on a stage, so how? So how, how does that work?
Right, so the platform that we're looking to, to build over there, that would either have like an overhead tent or a structure that we could build, like, you know, like you see tents, I think there's other farms that are doing events outdoors that they put, uh, temporary structures for rain or, or they put heaters inside or stuff like that, that allows for that. And I, I would say majority of the events are not going to be happening in the wintertime like you're saying, it's usually going to be happening in like from spring through summer to fall. I, I don't know if there's going to be events that are really scheduling to be in the dead of the winter just because of the outdoor venue and, and you're right, it's, it's, we're not looking to build a structure of any kind of indoor, but if it's within that timeframe and it works, then I think that's where the event would go.
Okay, I, I also just have like, this obviously would need to go through the planning board process, but the Woodbury Creek runs through the back of the property, I believe, so I think that you're in the water protection overlay district, which is going to present challenges and I believe where your stages would be in the flood plain, so that's another challenge. And then changing this, we would actually, Kelly, I think have to change our local law as well, right? Because our local law does not fit this.
There's a number of changes in your local law that would need to.
So I, I guess, I, I hate to ask the question, but is it considered?
Spot zoning.
Spot zoning.
I think that's something that your next council will definitely have to look at.
Look at you.
Okay.
But, but what I, what I can say is if you were to look at this as a zoning text change, um, and not just solely for this property, uh, so this property is R three A, I think?
R three A.
Yes, that's what it is.
Okay, so right now event venues are permitted in R one A, so if you were to look at expanding this to R three A, then it wouldn't solely be for this property, it would also include all of the R three A, but you'd also have to make additional changes because right now the properties, i- if you even, if you combined them, they don't comply with other provisions of the code, so.
Right, it's only twenty-one acres approximately and our code says twenty-five.
Right, and there's access and, and there's other issues, so there's a lot of changes that would either have to be made in the text or variances.
Even the parking, sixty spots would not be enough for eight, a hundred and eighty people, I believe it's two, uh, one spot per every two person, right? So I'm thinking more like ninety, but I mean, I know that may be at the discretion of the planning board, I, I'm not.
But there's things that you could consider if you wanted to look at revising the text to, to either put that in there. Um, there's ways to make it not spot zoning is, is where I was going with that.
Okay, I guess.
Also, the difference was originally zoned, um, not going to, since it was changed recently, that, that, that was.
Not that I'm aware of.
And I think the other two properties that are allowed are pretty much on the opposite side of ours, so considering that this is really already, we're in wedge between the two properties that are already allowed for this.
I, I just wonder how, like, changing it to our, allowing R, R three A, like, how many properties are we talking about that would fit that mold?
I think, I think that's a building analysis that you would probably want, um, a planner to perform.
Okay, I mean, that's just something that, these are just things that run through my head when I look at something like this.
We would consider also having a planner to discuss, uh, some of the questions that you have.
I guess my, my concern is if I'm approving a zoning change that may never even get through the planning board process or has a lot, it looks like it may have quite a few challenges to even get through the planning board process, whereas like the other side, like when we looked at, there's other projects that went through the planning board process, it were in, and then came to us for the zoning change. So we knew that they were going through the process, we knew that it was looking like we, they were going to get through it, so we made the, we can make the change. I just feel, I, I'm guessing, should I be not concerned that I'm opening up, I make a zoning change, but, you know, perhaps it would never come to fruition through the planning process?
Well, I think you would look at it, I mean, this applicant would be asking you to make zoning changes that would impact their property specifically to hopefully, in their mind, allow the project to go forward, but you would be looking at it at a, as a broader scope to get away from spot zoning, so you would be considering it on a village, village-wide, and so any studies that you would have to undertake, I mean, this, this wouldn't be just, as you know, from the prior, uh, you don't do a lot of zoning modifications in terms of, um, requests to change, but if you go back to the ones that you have done, it's not a one and done process. It takes time and you'd have to study the impact on the entire village for, if you change it for allowing it in the R three A. So you'd have to look at all of that and it, it, that takes time, so.
Okay, because that, that's I guess my concern is just.
Yeah.
Doing the zoning change and now I've, you know, we've opened up that to other people, but for, for this particular project, which I'm not sure will make it through the planning board process or not.
They, if, they might not, if all of the changes, if, if, when you look at it and you make certain changes, but certain changes you're unwilling to make, for example, like you still want two means of ingress and egress and that's a change you want to maintain, well, the applicant has to live with that or get a variance. And if they're unable to get a variance, then they have to find another way to make that happen. You know, that's, that's really on an applicant, but you have to design the zoning code for what you want to see in the village, so.
Okay, um, I'm taking that you own both houses?
Yeah.
And you live in one, rent one, some, something like that?
Kelly, would we be allowed to combine the two lots together to make one big lot if they own both?
They would be if they'd like to.
But it, they, twelve to twenty-one acres?
Well.
Your building inspector just said that you'd be creating a non-conformity with two single-family dwellings on a single lot, however, you are allowed to have two principal uses on a single lot, as long as they meet the bulk for both criteria, but if then you're changing it to event venue, then you wouldn't be, so it would actually require a bit of analysis, so.
We need quite a few variables.
Okay, but if, if we, if they didn't combine the lots, right, would we have to change the local law to say, it's, it's almost like two separate entities, so the local law would have to say not twenty-five acres, but I'm going to say like eleven and eleven, let's say. So I'd have to go to eleven acres, no? Because it's not one, it's not twenty-one acres, it's two separate lots.
I think you'd have to get creative in the drafting and how to, how to.
Because then, then I'm, then I ask the same question, what am I?
Yeah, Lena would have to get creative.
How many properties are going to fit eleven acres then?
Yeah.
Right, that's opening up.
And there's more of that.
Right.
And maybe we would consider only doing one lot if it makes sense, because as, um, in our concept plan, we do have, uh, events, most of the events base full and, and the stage that we would build, the wooden stage, uh, wooden decking on one side, so we, we could, if that's something.
Well, my more concern is that you don't, because then my local, because I, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I'm thinking it's two separate entities, so now my local law says twenty-five acres, right? So now if you're just, you have, it's almost like you have two separate, two separate, same thing, but two separate pieces of property, so now does my local law have to say eleven acres? Like you're at twenty-one versus my twenty-five, now I'm eleven versus twenty-five. If there, I, I don't know the interpretation of that, but that's.
But I think for, for purposes of tonight, I mean, the applicant has told you what, what they're looking to do and how they would like the board to proceed, and I think if, if this is something that you're considering, okay, let's try and work and figure this out, then that's an issue you should write down and say, okay, this is something we have to figure out.
I don't, I don't.
If at the end of the day, you're not interested, yeah, you're not making a decision today, but if it's something that the board is like, we don't really want to even entertain this, then that's something you should tell the applicant upfront before they invest a lot of money. But if you are thinking of entertaining it, then that's an issue you should mark down.
What we could do, Susan, is we could kick it to next month and then decide there whether we want to proceed with this moving forward and then schedule a public hearing from there. Okay, but, I mean, even before scheduling a public hearing, we would need a ton of work, yeah.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable there in front of planning board.
I can give the board extra time to kind of review this, if so desired.
And we'd be willing to do all the studies, we understand what that is. Um, I've done a few of these before, so I, I think that I, I've done some studies in the past and I think that we, you know, I've looked at this with some other professionals that I've used in the past and we feel like we can bring some creativity to showing you what could be done here and, and possibly.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to.
No, I understand.
I just, unfortunately for you, I listen to every single planning board meeting, so I.
Right.
I have a decent background on this, so that's why I'm asking all these questions. Um, I, I just, it, it's something new for us. We've never had somebody come and say, well, we have two pieces of property that are adjacent and we want to use them for the same thing, and then I'm comparing it to my, you know, local law. So I'm seeing like all the modifications and changes that needs to be made, plus some of the challenges on the property itself, and it just, again, concerns me approving a zoning change when I don't, I, I, I'm not sure if you'll make, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not an expert, you'll make it to the finish.
Right, and then we, we obviously, you have to go to the planning, we have to decide, and, and the concept could change based on the fact that maybe you're right, we, we are not, you know, the staging is not in the right place or the circulation.
Right, right, and I, and I get that.
We're willing to take that, you know, as long as we go through it and we understand what we have to do and we'll roll the dice and see if we can get it done and I think we're just at stage one here and appreciate the comments and feedback and we'll definitely take it to, uh, take it into consideration.
Well, based on all the comments here about the zoning, I personally would be more comfortable you were in front of the planning board first, so you see what they had to do and what the building department had to say, but, but you're here and we'll, we'll work through it.
Well, I think we still have to come back after.
Yeah.
The planning board anyways, so.
Well, you would, if the, if you're getting, like what Susan's saying, if you would get to the point where you think you're going to get through, then the planning board would kick you to us.
Correct.
To make the zoning changes that we're talking about, then if we approved it, then you would go to the final stage with the, uh, planning board and they would send you to the zoning board if you needed any variances, whatever came up during those proceedings, which we don't know right now.
Right.
So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here?
Yeah.
To a degree?
We're still doing it the way that I, I give you guys.
Right. Now going back to the, to your venue, are you going to have live bands, outside live bands?
Um, I don't know about live bands, I think it's just going to be like what you would see in a regular event. I know that they were, the, the winery or now, I think it's the farm that now change over there.
Yes.
They have live bands there.
Yes.
Um, that's not the intention.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there's no conflict with music going, being loud, going, both events at the same time, and then it just becomes noise for everybody.
Yeah, I think it's two different types of spaces, one's more for the venues and, and then one's more for the concerts, so I think we're more for the venue, I, you know, I don't, it's a small venues, it's not necessarily live bands, we're not planning on building a stage, a stage that has reference to, it's just like a, a wooden platform.
Okay.
You would see like a, like a deck.
All right, so you're not really building any kind of a building?
No.
You're going to use the houses, this, um, we'll call it a large deck stage thing for, for setup?
We can ask you if we can put a small wedding on the grounds.
Okay. All right, I think I'm good for now with the, any questions?
So what's the board's pleasure? Do you want to decide as of September twenty-fifth meeting?
Not decide, I could decide if you're interested in proceeding or let the applicant know.
I'll just say something, quick something, I'm sorry. I, first of all, I thank you for your time and, uh, to the, as a result of Woodbury team for your time. Uh, this is really a beautiful project, it's really a project of love, gathering, families coming together and creating a lot of jobs, um, and we're very excited if you're allowed, that, you know, would be a great addition to the town of Woodbury and, uh, just a great place of gathering and happiness.
Thank you. Okay, once again, what's the board's pleasure?
In my opinion, I'd like to.
More time?
My time.
Okay, anyone else?
I'll second that one, so.
Okay.
I'll just put it on the next agenda.
All right, I'm going to, I am going to place this on the next agenda, our next meeting is September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And we'll.
Discuss again.
Discuss again, but allow, let you know how we're going to proceed and how you guys should proceed, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I know Kelly from another county that she goes.
Uh-oh.
She's going to be well missed, I'm sure, she's, um, I see her at Incredible Job over here, so I'm happy to be here on the last night that you're here.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll see you around. Yeah, good luck on your next, uh, next venture.
Thank you. Okay, so as you may know, moving on to the next item, the previous village board approved an STR local law. Part of that is when somebody applies for a permit for, um, short-term rental, all the surrounding houses are notified of such and they can put in an objection to that. And when they put in an objection, I have to schedule a public hearing. So, uh, application was received by one-one-one-three, New York thirty-two, with that received an ejection with this application, as I just mentioned. Therefore, I need to schedule a public hearing. So can I have motion in a sketch, second to schedule a public hearing for September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five to entertain public comments regarding a short-term rental application objection?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, finally, this is it, people. Okay, introductory local law eight of twenty twenty-five, water moratorium. Can I have motion in a second to introduce local law eight of twenty twenty-five entitled Water Moratorium? A local law continuing the moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approvals.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Got motion in a second to declare the village a Woodbury lead agency and type this as a type-two action under SEACRA.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got motion in a second to refer introductory local law eight of twenty twenty-five to the Orange County Planning Department and the Water Department for comment.
So moved.
I'll give it to trustee Fryban with a second by trustee Fabro.
Right.
I think it was Vic actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I motion a second, schedule public hearing for September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
Motion.
Second.
Second it by deputy mayor Furelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's it for a bit, regular business, ladies and gentlemen, give yourselves a round of applause for sitting through all that. Especially you. So, public comment on anything and all things, okay? Starting with Tommy Powell in the back of the room, nothing?
Oh, yeah, I have to talk.
Ah, jeez. Tommy, when, when everybody grunts.
Years, years ago, there was a decision to put on Woodbury Concourse and.
Go wait, go to the podium, do the whole, you're on the spiel.[1702.13]